Yep, we're, we are ready to start when you are, Mayor.
Okay, I'm gonna, I don't have a gavel, but I have a marker. I'm gonna gavel read. And this is the city council meeting of November nineteenth, twenty twenty. Suzanne, roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Carr?
Here.
Mayor Protem Labar? Councilmember Case?
I'm here.
Councilmember Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Path?
Here.
Councilmember Zuluwaga?
Present and accounted for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If everybody could join me in the pledge of allegiance, I'd appreciate it. I pledge allegiance of the United States of America.
And to the Republic
For which stands
One nation with liberty and justice for all. America, we love you.
Thank you. All right. The agenda's been slightly changed that was published. Councilmember elect Stephanie Alfieri is not going to be sworn in tonight. We're going to wait for the official certification and Suzanne may have some report on that later on, but I'm going to move on to the next item, which is shop smell, shop small proclamation. Is Gail Winger there?
Let me see. I can call it she on attendees.
I see her.
There you go, Gail. If you have a couple of words to say, I'd love to hear them.
Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor, the city council and city staff and those watching by Zoom. I'm Gail Winger. I live at two twenty-two North Laurel Street in Woodland Park. I am the program manager for Woodland Park Main Street. And I'm here tonight to encourage everyone to participate in the shop small Saturday that's going to be happening on Saturday, November twenty-eighth. That is the weekend after Thanksgiving. This is an annual holiday shopping tradition that's sponsored by American Express. And again, this year, this is our third year doing this, Main Street and Woodland Park Chamber and Colorado Gear Lab will be working together to encourage shoppers to support local business. And we're doing that through having a welcome station downtown at Woodland Square. And Woodland Square is located at one ten Midland Avenue. And we will be starting that on, at nine o'clock on Saturday morning on the twenty-eighth. We will be handing out free coffee, hot chocolate, and shopping bags that will be full of goodies and saving coupons that local merchants have given us. So shoppers can go in and to have their, you know, enjoy savings in their stores. So it's a way for us to help support local business and get people to go into the stores and, and shop during the holiday season. And, you know, this is especially important this year because of the COVID crisis that we've all been experiencing. Also, I had asked Suzanne, and I hope you had all received an email of, that was sent out yesterday, I believe. It was a newsletter that we had received from Colorado Main Street. And it is their newsletter called The Main Thing. And within that publication was an article that highlighted Woodland Park Main Street, the shop small event that we're going to be having. Just so you all know, at the welcome station, we are going to be doing this outside and we will be following all the precautions for the COVID nineteen, you know, re-adhering to all of that. So we'll be having, people will be wearing masks and having hand sanitizer and doing social distancing. Everybody's safe, but still encourage people to get out and shop and enjoy our local merchants. So we invite all of you to come out and support this. It is Saturday, November twenty-eighth, and we want you to love local, shop local, and support local. And please come out and join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I've got a proclamation to read. And the City of Woodland Park proclamation is regarding Small Business Saturday on November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. Whereas the City of Woodland Park, Colorado celebrates its local small businesses and the contribution they make to our economy and community. And whereas the citizens of the Woodland Park area support their local businesses and recognize that such local businesses create jobs, boost our economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas the City of Woodland Park, Colorado joins with other localities in Colorado and across the nation and recognizes the importance of small business. Thou therefore I, Val Carr, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Woodland Park, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, as Shop Small Business Saturday. And all residents of the Woodland Park region are encouraged to shop at your local small businesses in Woodland Park, Colorado, to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Thank you. And normally I would shake your hand and present this, but I appreciate you coming and giving, giving us a presentation. It's a big deal for us. You've had very good success with this in the past. And I thank you very much for making the community better for it.
Thank you. Hope to see you all there.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. And we, we have a situation where we're going to consider putting eight A and eight B on a December calendar. The city manager and I talked about it earlier today. He's in concurrence. And, but we need a motion to move eight A and eight B to consideration on December third.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we move section A, A and B on today's calendar, move it to the December third calendar.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Mr. Mayor, I have some discussion on this, please.
Okay, Kelly, I'm sorry, council member Case.
You can call me Kelly. I just would like to know the reasoning for this, just because this is news to me, if I could. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do a brief explanation. We, we have a, a council member we expected to swear in tonight who hasn't weighed in on, on any of these things. The other thing is there's some changes to the the budget that are upcoming, and we want to give everybody time to study those. And we, we thought, we, meaning myself and staff, thought it would best serve to give us another, a little bit of time to consider these on the third of December and, and have a little bit better organization.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not aware of, of this council preparing or discussing any changes to the budget. And so I, we have spent many months and had reached a consensus and, excuse me, given the staff direction. And so changes to the budget is news to me. I don't know that this council has proposed anything to that nature. Last we met as a council, we had consensus and gave the staff direction. So I'm unaware of any changes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
We will, we will continue to have changes all the way up until the end. And we certainly had some discussion last meeting. Nothing was official, of course. Councilmember Path?
Yeah, we did have a meeting scheduled with plenty of notice on Monday of the week where we turned it into a work session. It might have been able to be something more substantive than that, but we did have discussions and input on the budget. And we, when we, when it gets finalized, we need to make sure that we have everyone's input. Though we didn't meet with some consensus on a previous work session, there were definitely other matters to consider. And we did consider them. And so we can certainly extend, discuss the, we can maintain the extension of that discussion with some of the other items that came up on Monday at a future meeting, and it would be appropriate to do so, particularly given the ability of a new council member to be able to have input as well.
And that's fine, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. I just would like for the record to say that any action or anything that, there was no consensus on Monday for either a meeting, or I mean, I'm sorry, a quorum on Monday for a meeting or a work session. Unfortunately, I had an emergency with my family and was not in town. Had to be in the Springs that evening. And so I, I just left the record that, that I did view the meeting on YouTube, the recording of that, and saw a lot of irregularities and am disappointed to see this group behave in such a flagrant disregard for rules and procedures.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I need to
Excuse me, I am not finished, sir.
Point of order.
I have the floor right now.
You are, you are
Mr. Mayor. That is my position. I just wanted on the record. I didn't ask for discussion. I just wanted to make a statement for the record. Thank you.
You to be able to ask for discussion. And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say that the meeting was on the calendar. It's unfortunate that council member Case couldn't attend, but it was the normal procedure. Nothing is out of order. No one did anything out of order, either in setting the Monday meeting or in participating in the Monday meeting. And I take great offense to council member Case casting aspersions upon other council members in her statement.
Thank you. I will call for a roll call vote. And I appreciate your, all your inputs. But we're going to move on. Councilmember Neil, I see your hand up. Thank you.
But he has made, okay, I did not have control over my mute. I, I, as a part of the discussion, I just want to make sure that we will have the ability to make a vote. And I guess my concern, Mayor, is we worked two months, you know, putting together consensus. I would like to be on the record eventually that I, I do agree with the consensus. But if what we're doing now is simply moving it till next week or the next meeting, I don't know when the next meeting may be called because there might be a special once the ballots are certified. I just want to be able to be on the record that I support the ordinances that we've worked very hard for. And then, once I'm on the record for that, because I did like the flat budget, then I, I don't mind being on record for any other discussions later on. So can
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your input.
Can you confirm we will get a chance to just be on the record for voting on it?
Yeah, December third is when the motion is on the table for, put this on a full public hearing on December third. And everybody will have absolute, on the record, discussions and points to make. You bet.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I don't want to step on your toes. Just want to make sure we're using the right vernacular. It'll go to the December third, assuming this passes December third for a regular meeting. But the hearing on the ordinance would be subsequent to that.
Yes, the initial posting is what we're, we're postponing the initial posting to December third. I believe that was the motion. Is that correct, Suzanne?
Well, we shouldn't have a motion yet because we're in discussion phase.
We did have a motion.
We did have a motion. It's on the table, point of order. We're taking a roll call.
So Mayor, just for the record, the motion is to put the initial posting of ordinance number thirteen eighty-six, series twenty twenty, and ordinance number thirteen eighty-seven, series twenty twenty, on initial posting for the December third meeting.
Thank you very much. Suzanne, please take roll call. I appreciate it.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
No.
Neil?
No.
Path?
Yes.
Zuluwaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries three, two.
Thank you. So we will revisit these on December third. Thank you very much. We, next, we have the consent calendar and two items, Suzanne and Emily, the city clerk and city treasurer. Take those away as you will, please.
Okay, with your permission, Mayor, I'll read both into the record and if there's any questions for either of us were available. The consent calendar contains the approval of the minutes from the November fifth, twenty twenty, city council regular meeting. And it also includes the approval of the October twenty twenty statement of expenditures.
Thank you. I'd appreciate a motion, please, council. Mr. Zuluwaga?
Sorry, raising my hand doesn't seem to make any difference on the panel. I just simply want to make a comment before we do this that Suzanne, I realize that you did send it a week ago, but I only just got it at six thirty. The actual agenda here with a full packet. So I have not had an opportunity to review the October expenditures. And I would like to table that for our next meeting. The other one I'm fine with.
Robert, are you making a motion to, to table it?
Only the one part, Rusty, just the, just the expenditures, because I haven't had an opportunity to review them, because I just got this packet. And I, and it's my fault, Suzanne, I just didn't see it a week ago. So, but maybe you've had
I would, I would welcome my emotion to consider for the rest of council, please.
All right, so.
Make the motion.
All right, hold on. I make a motion to approve the minutes for the November fifth, city council regular meeting. And I make a motion to table the October twenty twenty statement of expenditures until our next council meeting.
So I'm going to intervene here with Jason. Usually consent calendar, you have to split things off. Is that correct?
Yes, if we, sorry, it would be better to do these just as two separate motions. And I think if you're wanting to discuss one versus the other, it wouldn't be a consent calendar, but you can certainly make the motion to approve the November regular meeting minutes, and then a subsequent motion to consider the other item to table it.
So two separate motions. So I make a
Withdraw your motion and restate.
Sure. I withdrawn my motion and I restate. I make a motion to approve the minutes for the November fifth, twenty twenty, city council regular meeting.
I'll second it.
Suzanne?
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Path? Path?
I didn't know I was muted. Yes.
Thank you. Zuluwaga?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five, zero.
Do we have a subsequent motion for the statement of expenditures?
I'd like to make a motion to table the approval of the October twenty twenty statement of expenditures and authorize authorization of the mayor to sign the warrants and payment thereof until our next scheduled council meeting.
Thank you. Second?
Yes, second.
Very good. Suzanne?
Neil?
Yes.
Path?
Yes.
Zuluwaga?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five, zero.
We're now at public comments, not on the agenda. It's, this is a tough sign-up sheet, so we will go over. Suzanne, if you can monitor this, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, Mayor, at the moment, I do not have anybody signed up for questions, comments, or anything to that matter.
All right. Very, very good. Hearing none, we'll move to unfinished business. There is none. We've eight A and D have been moved per previous motion. And now we're in public hearings. And the first one is approve ordinance number thirteen eighty-three, series twenty twenty. And I'll let Sally Riley take the floor and help us with this.
Thank you, Mayor Carr and
I beg your pardon. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Carr and council members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. So ordinance thirteen eighty-three is the amendment to the zoning regulations that Planning Commission and council have been working on for more than a year in order to close the loophole with multifamily zoned properties and single-family use. I'm happy to share my screen and just briefly run through the proposed ordinance beginning with the recitals, which capture the purpose and the reason for this ordinance. And section one deals with title sixteen, which is mobile home section, which ultimately has a few new or updated definitions that are aligned with the state definitions and the building code. Section two relates to title eighteen, the zoning regulations. It too has several definitions, new definitions, as well as the state definitions for manufactured homes, mobile homes, mobile home park, modular factory-built residential structures, recreation park trailers, recreation vehicles, recreational vehicle parks. And then the section dealing with the use matrix, eighteen oh nine oh one oh, is, shows the first column or row where only single-family units can be built within the suburban residential, the urban residential section and in mobile home parks, but not in the multifamily. Then there are several rows that call out multifamily attached. Two family is now shown as a conditional use rather than a permitted use, which is currently the code. This was recommended by the Planning Commission to go to a conditional use for duplexes as well as three or more attached units and apartment buildings in row number five. Row number six stays the same. Accessory dwelling unit stays the same. And then it was added for row number eight to distinguish manufactured HUD home and mobile home parks are permitted. The purpose statement for multifamily suburban has been just slightly updated as well as the purpose statement for multifamily urban. Section three of the ordinance deals with title twenty, which is the flood damage prevention regulations. Just to add that their definitions are unique to the flood plain states definitions. So with that quick overview, I'm happy to answer questions or discuss any particular portion of this code amendment. This is a legislative item. So council, this is your public hearing. I do know that there are members of the public that would like to speak on this ordinance thirteen eighty-three. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll kick off the discussion, council. I, I'm very interested in, in the public getting a full opportunity to review things. So I'm in favor of the conditionals that have been presented by the Planning Commission. It gives us an extra layer of public interaction, which is will possibly help us when we come to situations we've seen recently in the last year or so. I'm, I think that's a good recommendation from the Planning Commission. In the conditionals that have been shown, I'm happy that we cleared up the line number one. That's just my opinion. But council, I would welcome other comments. I'll start with, I don't think Mayor Protem Labar is here yet. So council member Case, you have some input, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I've commented before that where I come from, when it comes to property rights is I'm as conservative fiscally as I am about personal property rights and multifamily is just that. If it's zone multifamily, why would it be conditional to have multifamily? It's, just doesn't make sense to me. I believe that should be a permitted use. I don't think that we need more layers of bureaucracy. I hear that all the time from my fellow council members that are with us this evening. Not just in this, in regards to this ordinance, but in regards to most all of the role of government. And, and so I think that the zoning is fine the way it is. I, I don't want to further regulate and further impose ourselves upon private property owners. So I will not be supporting this this evening. Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it. Councilmember Neo?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Councilmember or Mayor Protem Labar is not here. She called me and asked me to kind of express what her concern was. And it was the conditional in the multifamily zones. And I personally am focused on the single-family in multifamily being removed. That, that is one of the big things. Obviously, I campaigned on, I wanted to fix an inconsistency. To me, that was an inconsistency that has been repaired. And I, I actually had the opportunity to meet with Ms. Riley, with Mr. Path. And I told Mr. Path that I personally would like to see this approved, even with the conditional of the multifamily type dwellings in multifamily zones. If there were three council members that supported it being a permitted thing, I would be the fourth. If there was three council members that wanted a conditional, I would be conditional. And Jim, I hope you remember, I'm trying to kind of paraphrase what we talked about. And I think we were kind of, sort of in agreement. We just wanted to get it moving forward. But I did see the, the letter from the one, I think it was a developer that was talking about removing the bureaucracy. And, and I just was questioning, did, did we really do have the three people on council supporting the conditional? So I know how to vote to get a fourth vote. Jim, do you know?
Yeah, listen, I
Councilmember Path, please.
Thank, thank you. I, do you hear me? Okay, good. Okay, I, Rusty, I'm with you. I think getting the single family out of the multifamily is my number one goal. I, I have a positive opinion. I I have a positive opinion of Mayor Carr's consideration that that things be done publicly. I think the the issue of bureaucracy can work both ways. Permitted use leaves all the decision making within the the Planning Commission or the city planner, whatever. And the conditional use makes sure that if there are concerns, that those can be expressed. It's it's a little weaker than I think what you and I talked about. But I think you and I agree, we're meeting the number one goal of what we're concerned with. So I'm I'm inclined to to go that way with as it stands. I mean, but I I certainly want to, your retort on that, Rusty, if you if you agree with me on that or not.
No, I I agree. I'm going to hear what the the public does, want to add to it to make sure I cast my vote the proper way. I I'm taking it that Ms. Riley, who's an expert in this area, for recommendation. I'm listening to council member, I'm sorry, I I don't, I apologize now. Mayor Carr, his recommendation. I I just want to get the the one glaring inconsistency removed, which is the single family and multifamily, and I can live with condition or permitted for multifamily in multifamily. It makes sense.
House Member Zuluaga.
Thank you, Mayor. Well firstly, I want to echo that I share part of what council member cases sentiments are. And that is, I very much am for free enterprise and for property rights to the property owners. I I commend not only the Planning Department, but the Planning Commission for laboring through this for the last year. And Rusty for being such a bulldog on the issue of single family, multifamily. I think that's been pretty good. I am tonight looking forward to hearing public comment because I too am interested to understand the email that we had from the developer. I think it was from Mark. And I'd like to hear specifically what his concerns are if we are in fact building in more bureaucracy into this. So it's not my intention to build more bureaucracy, but it's certainly my intention to give developers an opportunity for a fair hearing. And so if bringing it before council for a conditional use permit is, as I heard council member Pfaff say, it cuts both ways. It could be in the developer's benefit just as much as it is. So I'd like to hear, so basically, I like it as it stands, but I'm open to be persuaded by public comment. So I'm happy to go to that.
Thank you, sir. So I've been in this situation for fifteen years from a volunteer standpoint, including Board of Adjustment, now City Council. And throughout all that time, there's been a lot of public comments and public input that have been interested in a more interaction. Now granted, the Planning Department gives plenty of interaction. People can go talk to them anytime they want, but public hearings are the way that we avoid some of the things that have happened in the past year and a half. And I'm interested in giving the public plenty of opportunity. The minor inconvenience on it, and it is minor, based on my experience, is is worth it to let the public have full input to their situations. And and all all these situations are mostly local. But as we know, we do postings and all those things. And if you happen to be driving by in that neighborhood, it works very well. But the change, the opportunity for conditional, and I'm not going to fall on my sword on this, by the way. I'm just, I'm just making the discussion point that the conditional gives not only the Planning Department authorization, but then the Planning Commission and then the City Council an opportunity to hear from all the the various citizens and not just tonight, but in every situation that comes up. And so that's, that's where I would mention that. If nobody else on council has any more questions or if you, I'm sorry, council member Case, please.
Thank you, Mr. Carr and Mayor Carr. I just wanted to to expand on what I said a bit. I I do, I do say that I support the single family, line one. I know that that caused a great deal of heartache for a lot of citizens. And I think that makes sense to me. I think that a single family resident should be on a platted lot. So that makes perfect sense to me. And so I'm, I'm very much in support of that. I just, I, and and I'm, I'm not really going to follow my sword, I don't think. But I just, and I want the Planning Commission and everyone involved to understand how much appreciation there is from this body and from me in all their hard work over this long period of time. And and they did do exactly, I think, what was the charge of the City Council. So I I I just have a hard time doing a conditional use on something that's described as multifamily to begin with. It just, it just doesn't make sense. So not to not afford the citizens the opportunity, they always have the opportunity to address us in many different ways, but it just, it just doesn't, this doesn't make sense for me. So otherwise, Rusty, I want you to know that I do support your efforts and and respect you for it. And I do support that item in this, and I think that's really where we started and was the ultimate goal of this. But just wanted to to clarify a little further. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you. The the other thing I would mention is the 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 other big piece that we we kind of ignore in this chart is that all the definitions that the Planning Commission and the Planning Department have really clarified are are very valuable for us to, we're we're basically complying with the with the state definitions. Now I did it, with the state definitions. And I'm, I'm thrilled that all that work has been done too. I don't want to minimize that that work there that's been done. Council member Neo, you had your hand up.
No, it's it's Mr. Pfaff.
Oh, I I don't see him here with my, with the view I have, I I can't see that, but.
Okay.
Go.
So when it comes to conditional versus permitted use, you have positives and negatives on both sides. As I think through this, again, I just want to reiterate, the overall changes are excellent. I'm I'm against zoning, period. I think we tell people too much what to do with their land in zoning. I'd like to see a much freer zoning if I had my druthers less restrictive or eliminated entirely. Just that's my personal opinion. But certainly moving towards that goal is always a good thing and allows for people to use their land in the way that that they want with the least amount of restraint by those on the outside. I think that's always the best place. Two issues that come up between permitted and conditional use. In permitted use, certainly not with the current planning department, but some future planning department, which is making all the decisions on their own, could be subject to the influence of developers. Again, I'm not saying anything about the current Planning Commission, talking about human nature. And that's always the problem. On the other side, conditional use allows for too much Jimmy rigging of the process, and that could be the negative of it. So I I come to this place where I can accept the conditional use part of this right now because the more that's laid out to the public, the less possible it is for influence, undue influence to take place. I'm certain we'll, for the most part, have planning department employees and heads who won't be unduly influenced, but that is always a possibility. So since we're making this change and on further consideration, I'm, I'm okay with a conditional use, even with its negatives, because it gives more open debate and discussion and more input from council as well. So anyway, that's my last bit of input and I'll be voting yes.
Thank you. Council members of the log, any last words?
Just clarifying, we are going to public comment, is that right?
That that will be next.
All right, very good. That's good. That's what I'm waiting for.
All right. Thank you, council. I will open this up to public comments. It's a public hearing and I see one hand up. Joe Fury, would you come forward and give us your name and your location, please?
And yes, can can I be heard?
Yes, I hear you.
My name's Joe Fury. I live at five, six, five Hembrook in Woodland Park. And I wanted to say, I like the, I very much like the wording of this. This new. And regarding the conditionals on the on the duplex and three unit developments and more. I think having that as conditional is very wise. The whole reason a rewrite was required was to close a loophole. Having those developments conditional would take care of any future loophole that we're not seeing right now. And it would give the Planning Commission, the council and the public an opportunity consider some future attempt to take advantage of of some other. It's due due diligence. Also, this code affects highly visible properties that would have highly visible developments. And for, and I consider that another reason for that be conditional. So that again is the opportunity to the Planning Commission and the public and the council to review something that's going to be basically the face of Woodland Park as people, as we commute on highway sixty-seven and twenty-four. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Wise comments. I appreciate those. Mr. Nakai has raised his hand to speak. You're recognized, please. Name and location, municipality, please. Mike Nakai. Sorry if I'm pronouncing that wrong.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yes, Mike Nakai in Woodland Park. Yeah, I was going to thank Joe for for his comments. Joe, like myself, spent the last year attending most of the work sessions with Planning Commission and the Planning Department kind of coming up with these changes. I just wanted to to remind everyone that we we got here by some developments that were very contentious in this city. One of them actually filled the Yoot Pass Cultural Center to capacity and then some. So the citizens, I think, should have a voice here. And going to conditional usages in these multifamily zones, it doesn't necessarily mean it's more, I don't think it means more bureaucracy. The the preparations that the developers need to make and the requirements are pretty much the same. They just need to present them in a in a public fashion and and have more than just potentially one staff member review it. Now we have the Planning Commission review it, which has a lot of experience in this and may see things that just one individual doesn't. They're still going to review it by the same code, the same laws that are on the books. But I've always found more eyes on something, more people on a team reviewing something or doing something is always better than than just one or two. And I think it brings, and it also brings these developments and it 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 brings them into a public forum so that they're done in the sunshine and they're done transparent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. We have somebody named Chip. If you would identify yourself and your full name and your municipality. And go ahead, you're recognized.
Hi, Chip Platz. How are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, could you spell that for our media folks, please?
P L A T Z.
Thank you.
Okay, um, my comment is I'm under contract right now with a a property owner in the town. I'm I'm gonna come back with Elk Grove Townhomes. And I would like to see if, you know, I could get consideration to be grandfathered under this clause as this was previously, this development was approved back in two thousand and four, I believe. And it basically is twenty-two more units to be built on that piece of property. And, you know, it has to stay within the confines of what's built there now. So it's not a tiny home development or anything like that. So I'm asking the board if they would grandfather this one, you know, if it could be done, Elk Grove Townhomes. I just don't want to be jumping through more and more hoops, you know, and I'm, it's, it's, it's a tough build. And I have to go back to reengineering and a bunch of other things that have to be done to come up to code to to put this project. I'm doing my due diligence right now with Langley. David Major is an engineer in town. Also, surveyor from Woodland Park, so I'm dealing with everyone from Woodland Park. And I'm trying to keep the business within Woodland Park. So I would appreciate if you would just take consideration to grandfather this project that was already approved that wasn't built out. I think there were twelve units that was built out and there was additional twenty-two more units to be built. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will defer to our esteemed city attorney and our esteemed planning director for any comments they have regarding that at this time.
So unfortunately, Mayor, I'm not familiar with the project that he's speaking of and what point in the process was approved or not approved. It really depends on what happened in the past as to whether this is a vested property interest moving forward. And I use that term loosely, Sally, because I know that it has some legal meanings. And so I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head because I'm not familiar with exactly what what's being discussed.
Planning Director Riley, would you like to pitch in on this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Elk Grove Townhome site plan was approved in two thousand and four as a permitted use. The first twelve units were developed, but the subsequent twenty-two units not. That site plan is now obsolete in that it does not meet code regarding the retaining walls and the drainage. So we, the staff has asked Mr. Platz that this needs to be redrawn and rethought. It cannot be built according to its approved plan. So Mr. Platz is in the position right now, depending upon what happens this evening. If the ordinance thirteen eighty-three is passed as conditional use, then he will go through a public hearing process with a new site plan that can be supported based on the current standards.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I see Mark Murphy. Yeah, I I let's, let's take the rest of comments and then come back if you wouldn't mind. Thank you. The council member Neil is not talking. Mark Murphy, you have your hand up if you wouldn't mind identifying yourself and your municipality. We'll take the rest of the questions and then have some more discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mark Murphy and members of the council, thank you also.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mark Murphy and members of the council, thank you also. I am the owner of, I'm the managing partner of the Elk Grove Village Townhomes. And I'm working with Mr. Platts on that particular sale. I did I did do the original twelve units that are currently there, the twelve townhomes, three different fourplexes. And when we were approved for this development in a in a permitted environment, there were an additional twenty two units that were entitled, pardon me. I was, I'm, you have to be patient with me because this all just came to my attention in the last seven days or so. So I'm having a difficult time catching up. I might ask a couple of questions of Sally as well in this conversation. I do understand the process that Chip is, Mr. Platts is going through as far as reengineering and proposing a new site, site design. I think it's important for the members of the council and you, Mr. Mayor, to understand that the additional twenty two units that would be built there would be incorporated in the existing Elk Grove Village Homeowners Association. If this particular sale would be consummated, Mr. Platts would be the declarant as far as the property is concerned. And he would have to build a similar product to what is existing there. Similar in style, not necessarily exactly the same, and also similar in value. One of the questions I have regarding the property is how, if this is presented in a in a conditional use permit environment rather than a permitted use environment, how does the public give input? I think my understanding is it would be in two, I think, city council, planning commission meetings where the public could be notified and then come and give their input regarding whether or not they like the particular project that is being built on the property. That's my first question. Is is that how that works?
Well, we would be happy to answer those questions, but we, the conditional use gives the opportunity for two shots at it from the public. So, yes. So any of these variances or any of those kind of things, there's board of adjustments for certain types of things. There's the planning commission or others types of things. The the former speaker has every opportunity under a conditional situation to go forth and talk to the planning commission about these things and then subsequently to the city council. I don't know if you have any more interest in weighing in Ms. Riley or not.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hear from Ms. Riley, the answer to his question.
So the public engagement for the conditional use is exactly what the mayor has just outlined with the two hearings. One before the planning commission and the second one with the city council. With a permitted use, the property is also posted. And letters are sent to the adjoining property owners. And there is a fifteen calendar day period with which the public can view the application and then submit their comments, which the staff takes under consideration and also shares with the developer. If under permitted use, that the surrounding property owners or others feel that their concerns were not addressed or they feel that there was an error in the approval of the project as a permitted use. Then they have the option to submit an appeal to the Board of Adjustment. So those, the public is engaged even with a permitted use, although it is not a formal hearing. Does that clarify?
Thank you. I I really want to make sure we stay on track. We're considering a code situation and not a specific development situation, but I appreciate your inputs and your concerns. I think I think your concerns will be addressed in my opinion, and in the way that you might have more aspects to appeal if we have a conditional permit, but let's stick to that. I I appreciate your inputs. I can't type responses to Mr. Nakai if Suzanne or somebody else could, I appreciate it. Point taken. Thank you. Any other comments? I don't see any other. Oh, here we go. Sir, Chip, we're not going to get into a debate over this, but if you have one more minute, I'll give you one more minute, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just want to bring up the point that we're the there's a condo association that you have to stay within the 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 looks of the building. I mean, I'm sure you all know where it is. It's on Troll, on the corner of Troll and Elk on twenty four there. And if you start going in front of the public, you know, I'm jumping through more hoops. Jumping through more hoops if they don't like the designs and I I'm limited to designs, you know, but there is an association that I'm getting with this property. And now I'm getting, I'm getting hand tied here by by not getting grandfathered. I mean, I just, this meeting was thrown to me, actually, by John, Mr. David Langley told me about it and I got in touch with Mark on Monday. I mean, I just found out about this on Monday, you know, so we're kind of hand tied here. So we're not asking for a lot. We're keeping the development the same. We all understand that engineering has to change. And things like thing, things like that have been updated since two thousand and four. We, that's not an issue. I'm going through that process right now. But, you know, the what 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 I'm purchasing is twenty two units. That's what I'm purchasing, guys. So, you know, I don't want to come in purchasing twenty two units and then get five units.
So, sir, I appreciate your
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, this Zoom overtalk, I apologize. It's a terrible situation. Once again, we're not debating any particular development. We're we're talking about a specific code change. I realize it has impacts. But there are facilities to do that through the planning department, the the planning commission and the city council if it's a conditional, but any other comments from anybody new out there? I once going twice. I see nothing, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And we have the possibility of additional questions from council. I think I saw council member Neo raise his hand.
Yeah, yeah, now that I've listened and I was disappointed that Mark Weaver wasn't here because I think Mr. Zuluaga and I probably wanted to understand his letter a little bit more. I'll just leave his his letter stand as as he wrote it. Now that I've heard from the public and in fact, the situ, the very situation that was just brought up by Mr. Plats. Let the council know that I am strongly in favor of it being conditional now because I I understand what we could get ourselves into without it being conditional. So, thank you.
Thank you. One more shot. Cost member Pat, any further words? Cost member Case.
I stand with Rusty and what he just said.
Okay, thank you. Cost member Case, I skipped over you. I apologize.
That's fine. You didn't. I'm I'm patient. Thank you. I just, this again reiterates my position on this. These folks, this is a lovely project behind the Swish Ale. And I'm, I absolutely hear them. I'm sorry that they were cut off before they possibly finished what they had to say to the council. I find it to be very relevant. And I I hear them and this is exactly why I I'm voting the way I am on this issue. Thank you and appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Cost member Zuluaga, any final words?
I want to thank the public for their comments. That's helped me see this in perspective. And I think the conditional use will be an advantage to to the gentleman. You know, Rusty, I know I'd be putting you on the spot to to ask you to share. Sixteen years ago, to have a permit permitted you sixteen years ago. I just, and I don't have the answer. I just wonder how realistic that is. I just wonder how realistic that is. And the reason I'm putting you on the spot, Rusty, is to share your story of your piece of land. Whether that would be of any value or whether that's something for offline.
It's a long I I was caught up in a very similar thing. I I probably understand his position better than anybody sitting on this call because between the time I bought my land up in near Nederland, Colorado, had a house designed or architected and designed with a ten year plan. Put it on the shelf, waiting for retirement date. In that time, the municipal codes had changed so drastically that my cost for development more than doubled and my wife and I ended up selling the property and looking for a new place. Of course, we ended up here. So I'm not sure if it was a good or bad thing. But I I can relate, but even with that, I have to put what I think is in the best interests of the citizens. And in this, having listened to both my situation and his, I still support the conditional, but thank you, Robert, for letting me actually commiserate with Mr.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate your input and deliberations at this point.
Mayor, can I can I say a couple of things from a process perspective before we move forward?
City Attorney Myers, please jump in.
I heard a lot about a lot of swords in the discussion, so hopefully everybody's safe at home and nobody's falling on any swords. But just wanted to make sure we're clear as to what's required to pass an ordinance. Given that we have so few of numbers this evening, an ordinance in order for it to become effective must require the majority of vote of of the entire council. So that would be at least four votes as opposed to like you saw earlier this evening with a resolution that can be passed on a vote of three. So we need at least four votes to pass an ordinance this evening. And I also wanted to touch base briefly on, now that I had some further explanation from Director Sally Riley on the state of the property issue, you're correct. We're not here to determine property rights for a single individual. This is a legislative function. So we need to make sure we're not conflating those two issues, but you're only allowed to be grandfathered generally allowed the rights that currently exist today. If that use has expired, then it would not be grandfathered in. I did want to throw out there that the code does allow for all ordinances shall be seven, effective seven days after publication unless a later date is prescribed by the ordinance. Whether you would like to prescribe a later date for this particular ordinance, I don't know what the timeline is for this project that's moving forward. There might be some flexibility. And it would be certainly something we don't do often, but wanted to make sure you were aware of all of your your options.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. I would entertain a motion at this point.
If you would allow me to make, I guess, my pet rock motion since I've been on council or been involved. I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance number thirteen eighty-three, series twenty twenty, amending portions of municipal code, Title sixteen, mobile homes, Title eighteen zoning and the Title twenty flood damage prevention regulations. All related to single family dwelling units in the multifamily residential urban MFU and it and multifamily residential suburban MFS districts. And I'm going to cross my fingers hoping for for votes.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Suzanne, oh, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Suzanne, welcome a roll call vote.
Thank you. Neil?
Yes.
Half?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Car?
Yes.
Case?
No. Motion carries four zero, four one.
Per the city attorney's direction, we have four votes, so it is a valid vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Council, very much.
So we move on to Public Hearings nine B, which is approving the ordinance number thirteen eighty-five, series twenty twenty. And I will let Darren Tangeman, city manager, and the city attorney Jason Myers presenters present this, please.
Do you see the ordinance in front of you?
We had it for a second.
Okay, one second. Now do you see it?
Oh, we see it. Thank you.
Okay, Jason, I'll let you chime in. As you know, this was brought for first reading last meeting. This is ordinance thirteen eighty-five. After council consideration, this proposal looks to change or modify amend the current code in section three point zero eight point one hundred and section five point zero four point seven zero to amend the business licensing fee from fifty dollars. If you can look at section three in your packet, the the business licensing fee from fifty dollars to forty two fifty in twenty twenty-one and then down to thirty five dollars in January first, twenty twenty-two, which brings it below the state average for business licensing at that point. Jason, do you have anything to add?
Just to add, you know, when we were asked by the city council through the budget process to look at this issue and we researched into the code, we found that these two sections somewhat conflicted with each other. One provided that council could make this change by resolution and one had the hard code fifty dollar amount, which would require an ordinance to change. So the effect is we're harmonizing those sections. We're leaving them both in. So interested folks looking in different portions of the code would find the same information. But this way, council would have the ability moving forward to change this by resolution, which I think was the intent. I won't bore you with the legislative history from the the early nineties on this unless you really want to go into that.
Thank you. No, sir, we're good.
Are there any other questions?
Council, any questions?
I have one, Mayor.
Mr. Zuluaga, please.
So, Jason, if I understand correctly, this will now be instituted across the board. There will not be an initial fifty dollar fee and then subsequent forty two or thirty five. It's going to be starting January first, forty two fifty for new issues as well as renewals. And then in January twenty twenty-two, thirty five for new new licenses and for renewals. Is that is that my right? Is that the right understanding?
The way it's drafted, I know the concern was during the discussions and Darren, if you want to jump in, that's great. But the discussions were, it would be a lot more of a burden on staff to differentiate between new licenses versus old licenses when we're sending out different mail leaves and attachments. So that's why we looked at this as an option, but certainly this wouldn't bind the council to any hardcoded and decision. It's certainly something that can be reevaluated in a future year by a resolution process, bring it back to a meeting and have a resolution if the structure that makes sense in the future.
So is that a yes or a no? I'm sorry.
The answer is yes.
Yes, your your reading of it is correct.
Okay, okay, great.
Rate for new versus current members.
I'm going to go in reverse order here. Since I started at the bottom, I'm going to go cost member Pat. Do you have any comments?
No, I'm in support of the proposal.
Cost member Neo.
No comments. I'm in favor from it.
Thank you. Cost member Case.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I, in light of some of the, the, what I hear rumblings in the community, I am not in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'm happy that we found a simplification for staff. I'm always happy about that. Any public, I will open this up to public comments at this point. I don't see any hands raised on this issue. But I'll wait a minute here.
Mr. Mayor, may I say just a couple more words, please?
Oh, you bet. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, and I, I just want to clarify where I'm coming from. This, one of our, our biggest goals and objectives as a council and as a community is reduction of debt. And I've even heard some saying, which I think is pie in the sky, but I've never, I never will be proven wrong until I'm proven wrong. Is pay off the debt we have in five years in, at the call date in twenty twenty-five. It's, it's a mystery to me how if we continue to reduce our revenue streams, we're going to accomplish all that and still provide services to this community at a level that's expected. It's, in my many years of, of being responsible for the public funds, I'm curious as to how that math works. So until we figure that out and we figure out our pool and we get some debt behind us, I cannot support reduction of revenue at this time. I've made statements in the past that once we get the, the interruption of property tax revenues that go to the DDA right now, back to the districts that are being interrupted and maybe we could have a collaborative effort together. All the taxing authorities in our county to make a big difference for our community. I think we need to stick to our goals and to getting debt reduced and, and get our, our aquatic center figured out and then evaluate where we are and see what we can do together collaboratively and make a difference. So that's where I'm coming from. I'm not, I, I don't think fifteen dollars is going to make or break any business in this community. But I think it's going to cause some significant challenges to our budget and our ability to reach those goals. So thank you for letting me expand.
You bet. Thank you. Councilmember Neil, I see your hand up.
Yeah, in, in councilmember case, I fully appreciate and agree. And when we get into any future changes of the budget, I'll be right there questioning that. But I, I think there's a key piece of information that I learned from our, our city attorney. And why this is, it's a fee versus a tax. And Jason, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you gave me a tutorial about how cities can have a fee, but it's got to be directly connected somehow to the amount of work that, that the city is performing. That's what allows it. And the explanation, when we had, everybody was paying fifty dollars, we, we may have been doing fifty dollars. The city staff may have been doing fifty dollars worth of labor the first year when they did the registration and checking on the business, making sure they're legitimate, truly fifty dollars worth of, of work. But then every subsequent year, the work was reduced and it was almost an a ridiculous overkill where we were really doing about twenty-five to thirty-five dollars worth of work. Can you talk to the citizens? I hope you remember the, the, the conversation we had and the guidance you gave me explaining fees.
Certainly, I, I remember everything. I'm just kidding. But I, I'll do my best. So generally speaking, when you have a fee in the state of Colorado under our laws and constitutional provisions, any fee that we charge must be have a, must have a rational nexus to the service provided. To be too candid and frank, that measurement as to what it, what that rational nexus looks like to the exact dollars the government is expending is a rough science. It doesn't require a huge amount of work. The courts don't make us do an entire blown out study, for example, to determine the exact cost for these things. A rough guesstimation is appropriate, but you are correct that the difference between a tax and a fee traditionally is a, a fee which can be increased or changed without a vote of the people, unlike a tax generally, which requires a vote. A fee has to have a rational nexus and have some sort of reasonable basis for the charge for the service being provided.
Thank you, Jason. So trying to close the loop on, on what I'm trying to explain, why as a fiscal conservative, I can cut off my nose, I, I, I can decrease my, my revenue when I'm trying to pay down the budget. I also have to weigh it against what I think is, is a fairness to the businesses. When I think they were being overcharged by having a flat fifty dollars each year. We made the attempt to have a fifty dollars initial and then lower for subsequent to align it. But the, the amount of work then that the cities performing, it, it became counterproductive. So this was the compromise I thought we had tried to come up with. I'm comfortable with it as a fiscal conservative, even though we are cutting our revenue in one area. It's, it's so trite really for the businesses, but it's, it's a gesture to them that we, we do listen to them. And even if it's only fifteen dollar reduction, it's fifteen bucks. Go out to, go out to McDonald's and enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll pitch in here and then I'll call on council member Pat. But first of all, I want to say that I recognize one of the statements in there was in five years paying off, certainly the public should not expect our seventeen million dollar debt to go away in five years. And this will hardly make a dent in it, but it's, the point is well taken. Every production in revenue is a reduction in revenue. And certainly I hope that public doesn't have any expectations that was paying off that seventeen million in five years. We will do our best to get, get there when we have some opportunity to do some of those payments. Councilmember Pat?
Your honor, I apologize for jumping in. We're still in the public hearing portion. I don't know if we want to close that out before we continue council discussion.
How did, how did we get out of, I, I, oh, I recognize that there was nobody had their hand raised.
Yeah. And so just officially closing it, I think.
I, I officially close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, your honor. Sorry to interrupt, councilmember.
Councilmember Pat?
Yeah, some principles here. First of all, every bit of tax revenue we take in or any government entity takes in is a reduction of the spending power and capability and the future benefit of any individual with it who lives within the geographical boundaries of that government entity. So every amount of tax dollars we take, however small or large, really belongs to the people and not to us. And we have to treat every, every revenue stream with that fundamental understanding to begin with. Secondly, this particular fee as it presently sits is roughly one percent of the entire revenue of the city. So even though when you're trying to pay off debt, every little bit counts. This is a little tiny bit and really will not fundamentally alter our ability to reduce debt. And lastly, it is the common parlance of elected officials to speak primarily of revenue streams rather than to speak of spending reductions. And we can as easily pay for our debt through revenue streams, but we can in many cases more easily pay for it through spending reductions. So, you know, I, I'm, I think we need to balance that out with two key understandings that the money belongs to the people. We take it for certain purposes and we should limit those as much as possible. And that it is the spending side of the ledger that is most effective in reducing future debts than revenue streams. Revenue streams take money out of the economy and reduce the overall economy in some form or fashion because it is put into government hands. Economies grow when money stays as much as possible in the hands of the people. So this is one of the biggest reasons I'm making a compromise to vote yes on this. Because the last thing that this, that a business license does is it gives a government authorization to do business. And there should be no government authorization to do business anywhere at any level or any form of government. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to back up to my cheat sheet of procedure for Robert's rules and go back to what our, our beloved city attorney mentioned. Actually, I had not gone into public comment and I was still at the council questions and staff questions. So I'm going to recognize Darren Tangeman in that staff questions and then I'll go into public comment and back out again. Please, Darren.
Thank you, mayor. I, I do want to kind of throw the stats out there in terms of what, what the impact is. And also I know we've had some discussions between some council members about what, where the, the rational nexus was with this fee. One thing I will say is that, you know, after the first year, and I will tell you some of the individuals that you spoke to, councilmember Neil, have called the city and asked us to enforce the business licensing of other businesses specific, I won't name specifics, but I know some of the individuals you've talked to. So I will tell you that it does take staff time. We often have to send our, our police department over to, to, you know, confirm compliance with the, the business licensing. And so those individuals who also, who typically are concerned about the business licensing are also the ones that ask the city to, to enforce business licensing against businesses like food trucks that come into town and so forth. So I just want to make sure that is a cost to the city to send our police department over to, to enforce that and to respond to our local businesses who would like to see that happen. And, and two of those members, I'm, you're probably very well acquainted with. I will say that the long-term impact in terms of cost, you know, I would say, I'll, I'll come back to the first point. I did, you know, I'm, I'm a proponent of trying to keep our business licensing at a, a level that is equitable throughout the region. So I, I did feel like we were a little high from a, from a regional perspective, but it does have a long-term impact. The, the ten-year impact of this is where between three and four hundred thousand dollars from revenues that could have gone to debt service. But council's aware of that. That's a decision you made with this, but it is, it is an impact. And so it's important that council and the community know that the, the reduction, which is intended to assist businesses has an impact on our ability to provide services. And so it, it's just a balance that you have to make. So that's all I have to say, mayor. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to now switch to public comments and look for hands out there and the attendees. Going once, going twice. I see none. So I'm going to close public comment officially this time. And go back to any final questions of council. I'll start with councilmember Case, if you have any final thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to, to expand a little bit on, on what councilmember Pat said. And I do appreciate where he's coming from. I, I agree. And I, I just would like to also suggest that government spending also injects spending into the economy in many different areas from supplies to contracts to contractors to a slew of things that, that spending provides an injection into the economy as well. And it does take work on both sides of the equation. Been through a huge recovery back in the early two thousands when our fund balance was dangerously low. And we went through about eight years of frozen salaries. We attrition of, an attrition of thirteen positions in the city of which the majority of them never came back. Many different cuts. So I've been down that road and it works and keeping, keeping on that road and being diligent really makes a difference. And, and so we've been doing that again. Over the last three to four years, we've come a long way. And so three to, I would say five years probably. When we were just a little over a hundred thousand dollars in unreserved fund balance and it's really hard to cash flow anything with that little amount of money in the bank for municipal government with a budget like ours. So I appreciate that and, and I'm committed to that as well. But we've got, as I said, we have a huge job ahead of us. And I look forward to working with all of you in solving that. I think it takes a village to figure it out because we all don't, not one of us knows everything. And it, and we all can contribute to getting there. So I just want to say that and thank you.
Yes, some of us ran when that hundred thousand dollars was in the mix.
Yeah, I was at the podium pointing fingers at you.
Yes. Councilmember Neil, any final thoughts?
Just reiterating, this ordinance has to do with a fee, not a tax. It, it does affect income, but if, if we have income issues, I think that should be discussed relative to taxes and mill levies and things like that. This is a fee that in my mind needs to be tied to a, a level of service. The, the fees we had were a little high compared to the services that the city was performing. And therefore I do support the reduction to get the fee more in line with the proper level of service that is being performed. And I know it's a uniform solution versus a tiered where the first year picks up the most and then it goes down, but it's also a, we did that to simplify it. So again, I'm a fiscal conservative. We'll talk about income when we're, we're trying to solve our expenditures or debt. But this one is a fee that's connected to the labor being performed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pat, any last thoughts?
Yeah, not having a business license will mitigate any need for the fee. One, two. Apparently, councilmember Case and I have a different economic theories. Hers, I, I do not believe that government ever does benefit society in terms of economic growth. The benefits that government should ever bring to society is the basic issues of public safety. And at least as far as municipal government, public safety, there are very minimal needs for any government entity. I'm not an anarchist, but I believe that government's only purpose is to serve those needs of protection, the rule of law and fundamental things that help society operate in a proper way rather than in a kafinous way. I believe in the broken glass theory firmly. Every bit of money we take away from a citizen is money that is not productively being used, period. Even those minimal services the government provides are unproductive. They, they meet needs that cannot be met otherwise, but they still do so unproductively and at every level of government. So anyone that wants to find out about the broken glass theory, go ahead and read Henry Hazlitt's Economics in One Lesson. It's a great primer on the potential destructive purposes and uses of government. So we would mitigate the need for the money for this fee if we would get rid of the business licenses and just let people do business. That's a fundamental freedom. So, you know, I'm, for me, it's a major compromise to vote for this because I would eliminate business licenses entirely. But as it is, it is a reduction in taxes and money that goes out of productive use. So since that will be less of a burden on the people of the city, then that's why I'm voting yes.
Thank you, sir. Anybody needs that book? I have a copy if anybody's interested. Councilmember Zuluaga, any final thoughts?
Well, my first one is on the lighter.
Well, my first one is on the lighter side. Jason, you remember everything. So do you remember that time when you were on a swing at the age of six?
I remember getting backflips off the swings in elementary school, much to the chagrin of the school nurse.
So right, that's, thank you for clarifying that. Councilmember Case, I I like the challenge of of the five year goal. I remember you telling me that we were within. What was it? One year of paying off the debt completely before you came on council?
Yes, sir.
So it'd be great to see to see it paid off when you exit council. How about that as a challenge?
Absolutely. I'd love it. Thank you for asking.
So. As far as this goes, I think this is this is a step I share. I share what. Councilmember Pfaff has talked about. I'm happy to eliminate it completely. However, this is a step in the right direction. And to juxtapose this just as in the comments of how come council is. Reducing revenues and yet we're so gung ho on paying off the debt. I think it's the balance. It's we need to be. Stimulating our businesses, letting them know that we're on their side. Let them know that it's them who create the success and the sales tax revenues. That this drives the city and our city, ourselves and our employees are servants of the people. And whatever we can do to. Be responsible with the funds coming in and the funds going out is important. And. It's been my experience that government will always spend as much money as you give them. So as a representative of the people, I'm happy to carefully examine what we're taking out of the out of the community's pocket. So I will be voting in favor of this.
Thank you, sir. I was. Keen on working this solution with the city manager. And the city staff, and I think they've come up with a very good plan. I appreciate their efforts on this. I would entertain a motion at this point.
Mr. Mayor, I. Since I don't have it in front of me, sorry. I move that we approve ordinance number 1385, series 2020. Amending the Woodland Park Municipal Code, Sections 3 dot 08 dot 105 dot 04. Concerning business license.
I second that.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Path.
Yes, sorry.
It's okay. Zuluaga?
Yes.
Car?
Yes.
Case?
No.
Neil?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries for one.
Thank you. We move on to new business. And the approval of alcohol at Meadowwood Park for the Woodland Park Hockey Association's annual turn annual term tournament. I will mention that I mentioned to the city attorney and the city clerk that. She reminded me that we have given. A authorization to the city clerk to work on Memorial Park liquor license approvals. Independent of council interaction and I would suggest. With the concurrence of the council that we have our city attorney craft a similar resolution. For Meadowwood Park and with that I I let Suzanne introduce it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Carr. Mayor Carr and council, this evening. We have before you a request for permission to serve alcohol at Meadowwood Sports Complex. Requested by Landis Siebold. He's from the Woodland Park Hockey Association. As the mayor mentioned, alcohol is prohibited in our parks in Meadowwood Park. Except by special permit issued by the discretion of the city council, and that's why I'm here before you this evening. On November 2nd, Landis Siebold with the Woodland Park Hockey Association contacted us to request permission. To serve beer at his Winter Park, Winter, Woodland Park, Winter Classic Adult Hockey Tournament. This tournament will be held January 8th, 9th and 10th. He's obtained permission to use the complex for the hockey tournament from 4:00 PM until 10:00 PM on Friday. 7:00 AM until 10:00 PM on Saturday and 7:00 AM until 12:00 PM on Sunday. This event has taken place for the last seven years without any incident. I'm here before the council this evening to get approval. For Mr. Siebold to have his hockey tournament and beer.
Thank you. Any comments from council at this point?
Yes, I can hardly. Imagine an event honoring hockey without beer, so I'm totally supportive of this.
Mr. Neil.
I've lived in Europe too many years where alcohol is, you can drink at a child's age. To have a sporting event such as an adults Hockey Association Tournament without alcohol is is funny to me, so. I'm all for it. I'll I'll drink to that.
Mr. Mayor?
City Clerk Leclerc.
I just want to make a correction. I'm sorry I referred to Landis Siebold as a male. She is a female and I apologize for that.
Thank you. In Minnesota, when you play hockey, you you're gender neutral. That's where I grew up playing hockey, so that's quite all right.
Just give him a beer, eh?
Yeah, there you go. Any other comments from council, free for all here? Somebody raise their hand if they do. Councilmember Zuluaga?
Is there a differentiation between a micro brew or a commercial brew? And will both be available?
Is that part of the permit that we're seriously considering here? Suzanne is frozen on my screen.
A nice smile on.
But she's frozen. I would entertain actually public comments. I'm opening up public comments. I do not see anybody with their hand raised at this point. Going once, going twice. I will close public comments. And entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve the alcohol at Meadowwood Park for the Woodland Park Hockey Association's annual tournament.
We want to make sure we have, you have the vote, Darren. Make sure we have.
Yes, I'm I'm all feeling for.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
As presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
My concern is we've lost, we've lost Suzanne.
Assistant Clerk Darren Tangen taking over.
Yeah, I'll take the I'll take the vote. Are you ready?
We're ready.
Councilmember Path?
Yes.
Councilmember Zuluaga?
Yes.
Councilmember Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Case?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Carr?
Yes. Thank you, council. We move on to reports. And that's me. Pike Peak area council of governments, we're having serious discussions about all kinds of various things. We have a budget, we have executive. Analysis and review and and all kinds of things are happening down there. We're right in the budget season down there too. We're trying to get. Get our two cents worth in from our standpoint here. So ongoing things at Pike Peak area council of governments. There was a CAC opening at large. I welcomed a couple of people to apply. I don't know if they did that. They're both on the. Zoom, but I I haven't heard anything one way or another. I have no idea if you applied. Other things happening, Mount Nartz Festival is on the 28th. Of November and it's from nine to four at the Past Cultural Center and Pavilion. On the third of December. Is the Chamber Lunch and Learn called the Fix for Annoying Neck and Back Pain. Is from 11:30 AM to 1:00 PM. Call the Chamber for information at the following number. And behalf, on behalf of the staff and myself and council. I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and I know that there will be two in my family in attendance. And I hope everybody has a good time with all their family, whether it's two or 20. But I appreciate everybody's celebration of one of our fine American traditions. And that's all I've got. Next would be Mayor Protemla Bar. I don't think she's here yet. I would go to.
Peter's flight was delayed. She's sitting at the airport.
Okay, you're up, Councilmember Case.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Carr. I have nothing actually. Parson Rick. Advisory Board meeting was canceled for this last month and so I don't have anything to report from them. I guess I would just also say if anyone's listening. That the the annual gala for the sponsors of the Tweets Holiday Home Tour. Has been canceled because of the changes in our COVID restrictions. So that won't be happening tomorrow. And but the tour itself is still happening on a limited basis. And we'll have a virtual tour to view the homes after the weekend of the tour. So that folks can enjoy the decorated homes that we're not any, we're not able to visit them in person. So at this point, we're on, but that can change at any time. So that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'm very bummed about the gala. It's one thing I enjoy every year, but. We will be at home. Maybe we could get a Zoom gala going. I don't know. Councilmember Neil?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Path?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Zuluaga?
Thank you. As far as the DDA goes, the DDA is in negotiations on Woodland Station, so that's proceeding. Can't talk about it, but it's proceeding and it looks positive at this point. Main Street, you've heard from Gail, so I have nothing further to add with regards Main Street. And I have one thing to introduce. There is on December the 5th through iHeartRadio. A broadcaster, Scott Arbor, who's been producing music. For 32 years for our area. He's got something called unplugged music. And so he's been doing this for 32 years on KBOC C Studio, if anyone is familiar with that. Well, there's an, there is a, an opening. Apparently what happens is an artist comes to the studio and plays music. They don't have their amps connected, so it's all very. Well, the equivalent of a cappella. And then they take that recording. They put it on a CD and they distribute it at different distribution places around the state. Well, as of this year, there is, there is a opening in the southwest of Colorado. To have a city that has a place where they will take these CDs and people drive from all over the area. To to purchase these CDs. And so one of our local. Citizens has established a connection with Scott Arbor and he is interested. If Woodland Park would like to get engaged in it and participate in this. It could be a way we did a. In a COVID environment, what we would have is something like maybe a drive through where. The KB, KBOC would come and bring their portable radio station. And announce it and then it would cause traffic through our city. So. If there is anyone who's interested in pursuing this, it's a little bit late right now, but the the date this is going to happen this year is December 5th. I'm not sure we can pull something together for this year, but certainly the. Availability or in the year is there for us if we want to look at it in 2021. So. So if anyone is interested, if you could email me at city council, be very happy to. Work further with you on that. And if any of council has further suggestions on how we could make it happen short in a short notice, that could be pretty cool too. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney Myers?
I don't have anything to report, but I did have a prepared question for council and I I emphasized prepared and you'll understand why. What would you get if you crossed a turkey with a ghost? A poultry geist? I don't have nothing further to add to the council. I appreciate that we're able to be somewhat jovial and lighthearted. As we finish these meetings up, that's always fun for me and nothing further to add. Thank you.
It is. I I will reiterate that I would like to see in the near future, you know, January is probably fine. Some sort of resolution so we can authorize the city clerk to authorize liquor licenses at Meadowwood Park. If for for council consideration.
Certainly, we'll bring that back.
Thank you. City managers report.
I'd just like to start by expressing my appreciation to the staff and all the hard work that they do for our community. The value they present to our community day after day here. So I think it's a. Underappreciated profession and I appreciate everything they do and I'd like to. Hand off the final portion of my report to Emily for her quarterly financial report.
Thank you, Darren. So I have included in your packets the sales tax update. So these are sales in September, taxes collected in October. And you'll see 19.7% month to date increase over 2019. Which equals 8% increase year to date. Or another way of looking at that is we're 4.8% over budget currently. And lodging tax does continue to struggle a bit and is down 12% year to date. And if you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Council, any questions for our city treasurer?
No, thank you.
Thank you. I think we're at the end and the next item will will need a motion to go into executive session, I believe. Any volunteers?
Motion to go into executive session pursuant to CRS Section 24 dash 6 dash 402 for F I for discussion of a personnel matter. And not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session. Any member of this body or any elected official. The appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of an elected official. Or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes regarding the recruitment of the city manager.
A second then.
I'm just for the record, Mayor, we do need to. That we corrected, we changed the agenda and it's regarding the acting city manager position.
Yes.
Thank you. I I amend my motion to reject that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I amend my second.
Okay, perfect. Zuluaga?
Yes.
Car?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Path?
He froze.
Okay.
There he is. He's back. There we go.
Path? To move into executive session?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries, five zero.
Suzanne and Val, if you, Mayor Carr, Jason, do you mind providing instructions so we can get this right? I know it's going to be a little. You may have not have received the email shortly before council. Jason, if you don't mind chiming in and giving some direction to council.
Absolutely. I was just about to do that. You beat me to the the spacebar button. So council, we provided you a new link. Given the functionality of Zoom, it's difficult to convene executive session here, so. What we've instructed you to do is to drop off this call, follow that new link. And we will leave this current meeting open, so if the public wants to stay around and and hear the report afterwards, they can. And so that's where we'll be at. I will see you on the other side.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you now.
So so we've got a, we're going to leave this one and and we'll get to get to the other link, which is in your email. So, so we've got a, we're going to leave this one and, and we'll get to, get to the other link, which is in your email. It might take us a few minutes to get there, but that's what we're going to do, right?
Correct.
And then keep this link handy so you can come back after the meeting.
So Jason, I have a question for you. Do we, will we be disconnected from this current link?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
We can hear you, Jim.
Sorry, I had a problem with my speakers on my computer. If you were looking for my yes vote, I mean, yes.
Thank you. So, yes, Councilmembers. You will exit the current meeting. And in your email about 4:30, 5 o'clock this afternoon, I sent you an email with an updated link to a separate meeting that we can control access to a little easier. And so click on that link to join that meeting once I get it started. And then we will return back to this meeting for the remainder of the public portion of the, after the executive session for any motions or discussion.
So do we have to go back to the website to click on the link in the, on the website to rejoin this meeting once we exited?
Yes, unfortunately.
All right. Thank you.
And the timestamp on the email is 5:21 PM if you're looking for it.
Thank you. I was off by a half hour. I guess I don't remember everything.
So we will see you all on the other side eventually, unless we don't, I guess.
Right.
So we, I'll let you do it. So, we, I'll let you do it. So, we, I'll let you do it.
It looks like Jim, Jim, I assume you wanna come back into, you wanna be a panelist, one second.
Glad we kept the tabs up.
Yeah, I'm having to work off of the website link, so.
I can hear you, Jim, so you're coming in loud and clear.
Except I got muted.
Not by me. Bingo, alright.
I think I'm here.
We are here. The time is now 9:17 PM and the executive session has been concluded. Will all the participants in the executive session please state their names for the record?
Jim Path.
Kelly Case.
Rusty Neal.
Robert Zulawaga.
Jason Myers.
And Val Carr. If any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during executive session, or that any improper action occurred during executive session and violation the open meetings law, I ask that you state your concerns now. Hearing none, the next agenda item is, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we direct the mayor to approach a potential acting city manager candidate and to proceed in negotiations as instructed within the executive session.
I'll second.
Thank you, Darren, would you take role call?
Lou. Councilmember Zulawaga.
Yes.
Councilmember Case.
Yes.
Councilmember Path.
Yes.
Councilmember Neal.
Yes.
Mayor Carr.
Yes.
Five zero.
Motion passes and this meeting is adjourned, thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Mayor, you know what to do, oh, he's gone. I was just gonna make sure he took the recording to the right place, so Sue's has it. I assume that they talked about that, you're on mute, Darren.
Yeah, I'm gonna stop recording now too, there we go.